We're good, alright. Good evening, everybody. Welcome, welcome. We're pleased that you can join us tonight for the Portsmouth School Committee meeting of April 18th. If you would please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our troops in harm's way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So prior to this open public forum, we had an executive session meeting. No votes were taken. May I have a motion, please, to seal the executive session minutes of April 18th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any, any, all in favor? I'm sorry, any opposed? Unanimous, seven, zero. Please let the record reflect that all school committee members are present tonight. In case of emergency, we have two doors there, one exit here, and we meet over at the school administration building. I just have one update tonight. Last night, here in town chambers, we had our school committee workshop on state education funding. As you might have been following, this has been a real challenge for us this year with some whip sawing in state education aid. I'd like to thank Chris DiOro, our school finance director, for making an excellent presentation on the drivers of state aid and what's driving these kind of reductions in state aid to Portsmouth. Ms. Terry Courtfriend, our state rep, kind of gave an update from what was going on at the State House, and Rich Reiner, town administrator, and Matt Helfand, Portsmouth tax assessor, were also on tap to talk about some of the property values issues, which is driving some of the state aid discussion. And we really talked about the formula, the drivers, and then was there anything really Portsmouth could do to kind of try and remedy the situation? I'm not doing it justice because it was an hour and a half meeting, and Mr. DiOro's presentation is definitely worth watching. On YouTube, it is, if you want to see it, it is Portsmouth RI livestream, and you can look for the workshop from yesterday. So I think it's going to be the start of kind of an ongoing discussion and maybe some talking to the town council. And we hope that it gives us some meat for hopefully future action. Moving on now to our favorite part of the evening, we have some wonderful awards to give out. Unfortunately, our superintendent, Dr. Kenworthy, is with us virtually due to COVID, but Dr. Viveras, our assistant superintendent, is here to lead the show.
Excellent, thank you. So this evening, we're going to be honoring students that have been accepted into the Rhode Island Music Educators Association All-State Ensembles. And there are two upcoming concerts at the Veterans Memorial Auditorium, March 25th and 26th, and at URI on March 15th. So for our high school, sponsored by Ted Rausch, we have senior all-state band Julia Victor on the French horn. Alright, and for our middle school, sponsored by Doreen Phillips, we have junior all-state orchestra Eden Conwell on the cello. Sophia Gennaro on the viola. Oh, okay. Alright, so for junior all-state band, Liam Atkinson on the French horn. We have Effie Nywoner on the Oh, yep, yep, more middle schoolers. Alright, so we have Effie Nywoner on the bass clarinet. Patrick. Patrick Orban on the trumpet. And Moses Weiss on the alto saxophone. We actually have two additional, so junior all-state jazz ensemble Eden Conwell on the alto saxophone. And junior all-state tremble chorus Kendall Schatz. Sorry, congratulations. Yeah, Doreen. Alright, and now for Hathaway, sponsored by Karen Aganetti, elementary all-state chorus, we have Zendel Conwell. Addison Krupa. Aubrey Lees. And Sadie Richards. Excellent, congratulations to all.
So, speaking as a former high school alto saxophone player, you guys do us all proud. That's really excellent work, so congratulations again. Over here, we do understand if you've got school and other activities and you don't want to sit at a school committee meeting, so please feel free to exit stage left or right, whatever is comfortable. We're really glad you can make it to be recognized. So thank you all very much. Good job. So moving on to subcommittee updates, we had policy, Ms. McDavid.
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. The policy subcommittee met on April 12 to discuss several policies. The first was, excuse me, the Rehabilitation Act of seventeen, of, no, no. It's old, but it's not that old, of 1973. It was old policy number 5411, and the decision the subcommittee made was to table that until our next subcommittee meeting. The second policy we discussed was the school nurse and teachers policy, which again was an old policy. One vote was taken to remove that policy. Third was a crisis intervention policy, which is old, and was replaced with a threat assessment policy, which is KDE under the new the new numbering system or lettering system. That was approved, and the decision was made to move that forward to this committee, and we'll see it in a full meeting. And finally, an acquired immune deficiency system HIV-infected students and employees policy, which again was an old policy, and we voted to remove that. Oh, there is one more. And finally, a new policy on athletic coaches, which is policy GCA. And again, we voted to move that forward to the full school committee.
Thank you very much. And now the report of the personnel subcommittee. We met Monday, April 19, April 17, excuse me. Two members were present, and we voted unanimously to forward for the full committee's consideration. The contract for PHS principal, which is on the business agenda tonight, for your consideration. We also discussed merit pay structure, no action taken, and that was just for discussion. The next item of, or I'm sorry, the next subcommittee is an important one. It was the district building committee, which met just prior to this committee. There are several items that we're going to have a number of motions for here, items C through H on the business agenda, and we'll explain those with Mr. DiOro's help as we get to that on the agenda. Other than, other than that, looked at some of the bathroom design photos, which I think we can post publicly for the committee's viewing, but very excited to see the the upcoming projects. We have a lot of projects going on this summer, from the Melville roof to bathrooms and should be, and the air conditioning at the high school. So should be seeing a lot of work going on at the schools this summer. Ms. Blank, you have something to add?
Seven members were present and five votes were taken.
Thank you. Okay, that does it for subcommittee updates. Is there any public comment?
And Dr. Copeland, I just want to mention, it seems like Mrs. McDavid, you possibly updated us on several meetings ago.
Okay. Oh, would you like to, would you like to amend your statement?
Thank you.
Locate the correct document here?
Is there any public comment? No, okay. I'm stalling.
Dr. Copeland really liked the bathroom pictures.
I did, I did. I really liked them. I was very happy to see movements on the bathrooms. Those bathrooms are in much need of repair, so. Can't find them.
Okay, I can't find them, I'm sorry.
That's alright, we will cable that update till the next meeting. Moving on, superintendent's update, Dr. Viveras.
Yep, so I'm going to start with, there was a resignation from Mark Souza, PE health teacher. He's a .5 at Hathaway. He got a full-time position. And then at PHS, we have our spring coaches appointments. So Anthony Vera, assistant coach for baseball. Brian Skiel, assistant coach for girls lacrosse. Hunter Andriosi, head coach for boys lacrosse. Margaret McCaffrey, assistant coach for girls track and field, and Lisa Zabel, head coach for boys volleyball. Alright, and we're going to move forward to the district updates. Alright, excellent. So we kicked off the month of April with National Assistant Principals Week, recognizing our dedicated administrators and their leadership roles within our schools. April 3rd was Paraprofessional Appreciation Day. This day is always a wonderful opportunity for us to honor our RBTs, paraprofessionals, and general school aides, thanking them for the work that they do for our students and school communities. On April 4th, it was School Librarian Appreciation Day, so recognizing our school librarians for the time they dedicate to ensure our libraries are stocked with books, our students are knowledgeable on how to be researchers, and the collaborative work they do with our teachers and schools. Every April, the US Defense Department and military communities come together to support and celebrate our military students, their parents, and everything that they do for our community. This year's month of the military theme is taking care of our military students. So as a district, we're fortunate to have military-connected students attending our schools. We recognize their unique challenges of being military-connected students and work to ensure that they have all the resources they need to succeed. RI-CAS testing has started. The ELA testing window for grades three through eight started on March 27th and ends on April 28th. Our math testing window will open on April 24th and will run through May 26th. Our primary day for PSAT 10 and SAT took place today, April 18th. Our makeup window will run from April 25th through April 27th. The district is accepting nominations for Portsmouth Teacher of the Year and Support Professional of the Year. A follow-up reminder email is going to be sent out this week to the community with links for most of the nominations, and they're going to be accepted through April 28th. And the Portsmouth Local Advisory Committee is hosting the annual LAC Awards on May 11th. Community members and staff are encouraged to nominate someone who has had a positive impact on a student with a disability. The deadline for those nominations are May, is May 1st. And just an update on our PMS and PHS principal search process. Initial and final interviews have taken place for the PHS principal position. Dr. Kenworthy has made his final decision, and I'll be reporting out on this during our business portion of the agenda. Initial interviews have taken place for PMS principal position. Final interviews are scheduled for next week. Our hope is to have a final candidate and a contract to present to the committee by May 9th. That's all for the updates.
Great. Any questions? Actually, I have one. There was a number of comments on social media about how ninth graders had to basically be in one classroom all day for, because of the PSAT and SAT classrooms. What's that?
Yeah, so we were discussing some of those comments up. We're not sure where the comments came from. It was a full day of school, and I think that possibly when the team from the high school is presenting, they can speak on that a bit.
Okay, yeah, I was just, just curious, thank you. Yeah, and unfortunately, we didn't have tonight the high school liaison update on the agenda, so I just saw that our high school liaison just left. I'll take full responsibility for that because we forgot, we forgot to put it on the agenda, so formal apology to our high school liaison. We'll give them double time next month. I'm sure they would too. Okay, can I have a?
Dr. Copeland, if, can I go back to this?
Yes, can we return to the subcommittee updates?
I apologize.
Policy subcommittee, please.
Disorganization here. Okay, so similarly, we discussed a number of policies. The first one was the Code of Conduct for Staff-Student Relationships, which is policy GBEB. We voted to return that to our subcommittee, following advice from Ms. Carol. Secondly, we discussed a chemical health and student safety policy, and on that one, that one also is coming back to the, to the subcommittee after resolving some issues. Third is an appeals to the school committee policy BGBA. That one also is coming back to the school committee after solving some issues. Fourth is a safe harbor policy, which is new policy DL, which we voted to move forward to the full committee, and it is on the agenda tonight. And that was what we discussed. Okay, great meeting this time, thank you.
Well done, thank you. Okay, moving on to our PHS highlights.
Excellent. So this evening, our teaching and learning presentation is going to focus on the work that our high school team is doing to support students needing additional interventions and support. So here with us this evening, we have acting principal Paige Corwin-Clare, assistant principal of teaching and learning Amanda Turkot, and assistant principal of Freshman Academy Jody Nevz.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunities to share some of our programming highlights with you from Portsmouth High School. As we know, the first priority of our district's strategic plan is the commitment to academic rigor for all students. We believe that high-quality instruction is the foundation of exemplary education to prepare our students for post-secondary education and a career. All means all. We, but we know that the terms equal and equitable are not interchangeable. We've committed to providing equitable opportunities to prepare each and every student for college and/or career upon graduation. To that end, we must continually evaluate our current programs and adapt the opportunities available to our students based on their changing needs. Ms. Turkot has designed this slideshow to showcase the work that's been happening at Portsmouth High School, and then Ms. Jody Nevz will speak to what we're doing for the incoming freshmen during their transition. So, Amanda?
Hi, everybody. You'll have to forgive me, it's been a long day of testing. I'm a little bit weary-eyed, just a little bit. I've been gone since four o'clock this morning. But anyway, hi. So as Ms. Corwin-Clare said, we're, when Dr. Viveras and I talked about this presentation, I thought, you know, we we have a lot of really like high-flyer things to celebrate here in Portsmouth. We have great sports teams and great music programs and you know, our test scores are really, really good. But I think something, we, we don't always celebrate that deserves to be celebrated are our students who might be at risk and are struggling. And of course, our priority is prevention, always. We want to make sure we can get to kids and intervene before they get to a place where they need a high level of support. But we know that despite our best efforts, there's always going to be a small population of students who need a little bit extra. So today, we just want to highlight what we do for those kids who need something more at our school. So we'll talk about our ESR projects, the ramp up, which Ms. Nevz will talk a little bit about, and some tier-three supports. We'll talk about our credit recovery program, check and connect intervention, which is a dropout intervention. Talk about our ALP and CLC programs, and then we'll talk about our CAP program, which is a new vision for next school year. So I'll turn it over. We got lots of them.
Alright, so in the spirit of prevention, actually, we'll start first by talking about our ramp up mathematics program that was run last summer by Ms. Kimberly Roseander, a math teacher that is a member of the Freshman Academy, who works primarily with freshmen. So to her credit, she ran a ramp up program for students, any, open to any and all math students to get them started, to get them accustomed to and acquired to mathematics as it looks at the high school. This program, I think, was a little bit unique in that it was open to all students, from struggling students to really strong math students, and so she worked with them all to work collaboratively and support each other and prepare for the upcoming school year. So it was an excellent program, great feedback from both faculty and students, and so it's a program that we're hoping to run again this summer.
So in addition, we, to the ramp up over the summer, we also have, this year, we've put in, we got a little bit creative. We had some ESR money to spend. That's just the flyer for the ramp up program that Ms. Nevz was talking about. So, yeah, again, this spring, we had a little bit of ESR money to spend, and we had a cadre of kiddos who needed something else. They needed a little bit of extra intervention. And so what we did is we went through and we, our MTSS team identified a list of students who would qualify for intervention, but for one reason or another, we're not able to get it. Then we looked at teachers who might have some availability, some preps and things in their schedule, and might be willing to, you know, per their contract, sacrifice a prep in order to work with students and provide a little bit of intervention. And so we were able to do that. We have, it's focused on tier three, it's very small, and I'm sure you can imagine asking teachers to give up their prep, even if they're getting paid, it's not, doesn't always go well. But we did have a couple of teachers step up, and so we are able to provide extra literacy intervention and checking. We have one additional check and connect mentor, and I'll tell you a little bit more about check and connect in a sec. Alright, another major part of our program here is credit recovery, and you're going to hear less from me in a moment and more from the members of our amazing, amazing credit recovery team. And I just, I want to be transparent and honest that I reached out to our credit recovery team, and I said, putting together this presentation for the school committee, do you guys want to contribute anything? And I will call it a good problem when you have too many teachers send you too much stuff over their April break for your school committee presentation. So if there's a little bit of overlap in the two videos you're going to see, you'll understand. Again, good problem, so. Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Yeah, so credit recovery is, and you'll hear about it in a second, but essentially, it's students who are undercredited and at risk of not graduating in time. And so credit recovery is an alternative avenue or an opportunity for students to earn PHS credits towards graduation. Right, so you'll hear in the next slide from Ms. Wagner, who is one of our special educators, who supports the credit recovery program through both summer school, after-school, and weekend credit recovery. So she'll talk a little bit about that.
... is one of the leading educational institutions in the state. The reason is because PHS takes its commitment to educating all individuals, no matter who they are or what their circumstances may be, seriously. It does this by offering a variety of programs to help learners achieve academic success, one of which is credit recovery. Credit recovery is a support for those who need something a little extra. It allows students to enhance their understanding of the key concepts all high school students should know. It allows students to earn high school credits in a number of core academic areas by providing them with interactive and informative lessons. It allows students to make their dream of graduating on time a reality. For learners who need more than what is provided in a standard classroom environment, credit recovery is more than just an option, it's an opportunity.
So that was Ms. Wagner, if you're watching, Ms. Wagner, thank you. So the next slide is just a screenshot of Edge Annuity, the, what students see when they log into that Edge Annuity dashboard. So that's a sample, that's the program that we mainly use. But again, as we'll talk about with CLC, and as you heard a little bit earlier this year with CLC, we're also looking at other creative ways that don't involve Edge Annuity for school credits. The next couple of folks you're going to hear from are Josh Anderson and Alex Carlson, who are, again, members of our Rockstar Credit Recovery Team, and just last week, that is the invitation that they created and sent home to students in the credit recovery program, inviting them to come in for a supervised, structured opportunity to make a major dent in their Edge Annuity work. So they, it was a three-by-three, three hours, three days over April break. The teachers came in, worked with the kids, kids came to school, and did a bunch of work on their Edge Annuity credit, credit recovery, which is super helpful. So they'll tell you a little bit about that in the next slide.
My name is Alex Carlson.
And my name is Josh Anderson.
And we are here to talk to you about the credit recovery programs that we offer at Portsmouth High School.
So the program overview, the credit recovery program, helps students who are missing credits and develop skills and stay on path to graduation. Using the blended learning tool Edge Annuity, we allow students to access personalized curriculum while striving to meet the rigorous achievement standards.
3.6% of students at Portsmouth High School are enrolled in our credit recovery programs. This 3.6 percentage represents a population of students who are at risk of not graduating on time. Through credit recovery and Edge Annuity, 3.6% of students have the support that they need to stay on pace for graduation.
Flexible schedule. This allows for students to vary at different times and places to be able to do their credit recovery. One option is in-school, if their students are enrolled in either ALP or CLC. Another option is after-school.
Hi, my name is Alex Carlson.
After-school sessions, and the last one is over break. We have a blitz week during April, and then we also have summer school options.
I mean, all the information is accurate.
For teaching and planning, Edge Annuity allows teachers to create curriculum that is customizable but also aligned with the standards. This platform allows us to create an individualized learning plan that covers the essential content or skills from a course that a student did not meet the learning expectations for or missed during the school year. Department heads have approved or modified Edge Annuity courses to align with our Portsmouth High School's rigorous standards. For example, if a student passes quarter one and quarter two but failed the class in quarter three or quarter four, teachers can tailor Edge Annuity courses to reflect only what the student needs to earn back the credit.
This isn't quite what I meant, there was like overlapping information.
So progress monitoring, it's data-driven and user-friendly. So students and teachers have tubes and screens, and they can see in real time their overview of the activities that they've completed and what they still have left.
There we go. I think we heard. Does anybody have any questions about anything you heard from Ms. Carlson or Mr. Anderson? I'm happy to clarify.
I think it's fantastic that we have something like this to help, to help all students get up to speed when, when they need that support. And it was nice to hear if it was just a certain quarter that they needed help, it wasn't a refresh of the whole entire year, really focus on, on where their, their needs were. When you had the three-by-three over April vacation, how well attended was that?
Not as well attended as we would have liked it to be, and we incentivize, we have raffle booths and gift cards and snacks and water and all of the things. Although I will say, this year was the lowest attendance, and I suspect that had to do with the really nice weather that we had over April break, if I'm being honest with you. that we had over April break, if I'm being honest with you. We've done it in years past over each of the breaks. This year, the budget didn't allow for that, but in past years, we've had very high attendance rates. This year, it was not quite as high.
We should aim for February vacation or something.
I actually, yes, as long as it doesn't snow, which did happen during a blitz week once.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll do our Thanksgiving.
Beyond that platform, perhaps this is like another field, but like put a student who, an internship.
You are sneak peeking my next couple of slides, yes, we'll get there, I promise. Alright, so the next one I'll talk about quickly is check and connect. So check and connect is an intervention that we laid the groundwork for last year. On the next slide, you'll see sort of an overview of what check and connect is. It is a research and evidence-based dropout prevention intervention. It is designed to be a one-on-one, essentially, it's the adult who makes students understand that school is important, that school has value, that school is important for your future, and someone here at school cares about you and is, is invested in you, even if maybe nobody else in your life is invested in your academic success. So, and the next slide, you'll see, we worked with the Prevention Coalition last year, and they provided funding for us to have 15 teachers trained to become check and connect mentors. We, this year, we're piloting the program. Those teachers volunteered to make that their duty, even though it involves prep. And they are working, they are mentoring students one-on-one. You'll hear from one of our mentors in a moment. And the goal is to ramp that up exponentially by using the current mentors as trainers for future mentors. This is, if you don't know already, Risha Pellegrino, who is the unofficial leader of our check and connect program. She, she has a lot of leadership qualities, and she has just risen to the occasion and been one of our best mentors. And again, stepped up over April break to tell you a little bit about it.
Hi, my name is Risha Pellegrino. I teach physical education and child studies at the high school, and I'm also a check and connect mentor. Check and connect is a tier three intervention where mentors are paired with students who struggle with attendance. And the goal is to create a positive relationship with an adult at the school to motivate them to go to school. One of the things that we try to do is really get a point across that attendance is very important for academic success. And part of that is meeting with the students once or twice a week, as well as looking at data. So their attendance, any behavioral issues that might come up, as well as grades and missing assignments. It's a time that we can meet with that student, set some goals, and just have a, a nice conversation and a positive relationship that doesn't have to do strictly with classroom needs and, you know, requirements, so that that student feels that they have a safe space to go to. I personally love being a check and connect mentor. It's been really rewarding. I meet with my student once or twice a week, depending on what that schedule looks like. And I know my student looks forward to it as well. She will seek me out in the day sometimes to say, hey, can we meet today or tomorrow? So that we can really work on setting those goals and setting plans in order to either catch up on missing work or set goals for attendance for the next week. It's been really, really great. I have gotten to know my student very well and have found that, you know, by knowing when meetings are and being consistent with it, my student is showing up to school and making sure that they keep me accountable too by checking in to make sure that we're going to meet when, you know, she needs to meet. So overall, it's been a really great experience.
So that's check and connect, which we are really, really proud of, we love that program. The next that you'll hear about are ALP and CLC. So ALP is sort of an existing longstanding program that we've had at PHS for quite some time. ALP stands for Alternative Learning Program. It currently serves students in grades 10 through 12, who are at risk of not graduating on time due to lack of credits. This route right now is a pretty traditional credit recovery model, where it's a blend of, you're doing okay in your math class, you're going to stay in your math class, you're not doing, you didn't pass that English nine class, you're going to make that up on Edge Annuity. So that's, that's a very traditional model. CLC, which the committee heard quite a bit about this winter when we were proposing it, is, that's the, the sort of exploratory program that we're looking at now, where right now, we're, we're in kind of a pilot mode for this semester. We've got Jessica Slocum, who is running the Community Learning Center. That serves students in grades 11 and 12, and that's where we're looking at some of those other opportunities for things like work-based learning, flexible credits, project-based learning, in order to earn credits outside of Edge Annuity, because we are also finding Edge Annuity does work for a large population of credit recovery students, but not all of them. So this is just a sample of the celebrations that we do. So this is a student in ALP, and we get the woo-hoo email saying the student has completed, please update their transcript. And that was a recent one. That's Mr. Anderson, and that's a shot from, if you go into that room, you would think it's the saddest place in the world, because it's like in the darker, older part of the building, but they love that space and they own that space. So I thought the chalkboard was kind of an important thing to put up there. Couple of our kiddos in the ALP program. These are some kiddos in our CLC program. That kiddo there is, he's really good at like breaking down cars, and so he's looking at, how can we get you some math and science and engineering credits for that? This is a success story, this is one of those favorite students we're not supposed to have, this is one of my favorite students. This is Melanie. So one of their traditions in ALP is they get to paint one of the cinder block bricks once they have confirmed that they are graduating. So, and it's really nice, it's a motivation for them, but it's also a motivation and inspiration for other kids. For some kids, knowing they're going to paint that block at the end of the year is a huge carrot. And so Melanie is a success story, because I like to joke that we kind of hail married her across the graduation line at the very last minute, that's her right there. And she is now a proud independent business owner of Dipped by Mel's. Check her out, her stuff is really good, I keep telling her to up her prices. Alright. And in this, it's another video, Ms. Rhodes. This is from the mouths of some of our students in the ALP and CLC program. And I need to take a moment to recognize a student who's not in here, but Megan Conant, who is a member of our digital video program, came in over her April break and was like, sure, I'll edit that video and put those all together for you, I'm great at that. So shout out to Megan Conant for that.
Hi, I'm Marissa Fiderova, I'm a senior at Portsmouth High School, and I'm in the ALP program. In prior years, I was a horrible student. I wasn't on track to passing all my classes. I was passing three or four out of the eight of my classes that I was supposed to be passing for. Like say, I've been getting the extra help and guidance that I need in order to graduate. I'm in a better place than I was last year, and it is a very helpful program.
If they're quiet. You can see it in the backup. Perfect. But maybe forward along, because I think the volume does change in the next set. Oh yeah, we should watch it, just go back a little bit if you don't mind. This is a good one, there we go.
I go to Portsmouth High School. When I was a freshman, I did not know what to expect. I didn't like really feel like I had a connection with anyone, so I started to like skip school more and more and more. And then it got to a habit where I didn't go to geometry. It was bad, I failed that, I failed English, and I failed a few art classes. And I wasn't, I wasn't going to graduate, I was going to graduate in like 2024. Junior year came around, and I knew I needed to turn things around, but I couldn't do it on my own, I was struggling. I found out there was ALP, it was like a class to help people that struggle in school and don't like school. I was like, yep, I need that. And Ms. Parker and Mr. Anderson have been like so great, helping me out and like pushing me when I'm not like trying on my work or like just looking on my phone. Ever since junior year, I turned things around, I've been passing all my classes. And this year, it's senior year, I'm a senior. I just got a book award, and I'm going to graduate on time too. So I feel like it's a big accomplishment. Without ALP, I don't think I could have done it.
I'm Lorenzo Raposa, I'm a senior.
I'm Walker Anderson, and I too am a senior for CLC.
We can probably pause and you can watch the backup, but more students talking, very similar kinds of stories, and we'd be watching it for the eighth time. So just students talking about where they were before ALP and CLC, and where they're going next. So I'm sorry that we didn't get to see that live, but I would encourage you to watch it, because it is very, very touching. So the very last thing we will talk about tonight is the TAP program. So TAP is a vision for 2023 and, excuse me, 2023, 24 and beyond. And the TAP is kind of what we're looking at, it stands for therapeutic academic program. And the idea would be that it kind of becomes an umbrella for our ALP, our CLC, and a more behaviorally centric support program, again, for those tier three students, which works out to be roughly 5% of our population. Right, that was a lot, I'm sorry for the sound issues, I'm happy to answer any questions. In the lower E wing, come see them, I will be happy to bring you on a tour and introduce you to the kiddos.
Can we go back to the TAP program?
Sure.
Probably because just throw a ton of information over the last couple of months, but can you describe the program other than more than just an umbrella program? Like what are you envisioning? And are, are there models around the country that have used this type of program? And where?
Yeah, so I think Ms. Shay can talk a little bit, she, she came up with the acronym for TAP, which we love. Again, we love our acronyms here. But I think the idea is that it would be sort of like a revol- hand gestures, a revolving. Find a new one. It, the idea would be that it's support that the student needs, and it's kind of flexible, and we, we would envision, right now, if you're in ALP, you're in ALP, if you're in CLC, you're in CLC. And there's not a ton of crossover between those, and we know that some students need a little bit of what CLC offers, some students need a little bit of what ALP offers, and some students, in addition or instead of, need something a little bit more behaviorally, CL focused.
And the goal would be that, a team would be teaching this essentially. So you could have a day where you just sort of sit by yourself and work independently on Edge Annuity, or maybe there's a day that you are working on a flex credit and sort of this is with an internship. And this team itself, we know that it's not, if you're not coming to school, there's not just one reason that you're not coming to school, right? So we have to figure out the function of your behavior, and part of that is understanding that you have a team of, with different strengths that. It's, it's super exciting program.
And we've been doing the work, I just want to follow up with that. We've been doing the work through this MTSS framework that we have at both our elementaries and our middle school. Our high school, this has been a work in progress, because it's a lot more difficult to support our students. So when we're thinking of the academics and then the social emotional needs of students, all three of these programs bring that all together. So we're currently really trying to work on it, still having meetings on developing it. So yeah.
Is there a framework or a model elsewhere that we're, that we're basing it on? Or is it something that we're just piecemealing and putting together?
No, so I would say the framework stems from, from our MTSS framework. So knowing that in order to support the whole child, we need to ensure that we're meeting their social emotional needs along with their academic needs, and bringing that together. And then also understanding that we have times when we have students that require additional services through an IEP that also need those additional supports, and so we're bringing the three together. So it's really just taking that MTSS framework and structure and creating a system within our high school to support our students.
Just wanted to say thank you for putting this together, and in addition to that, for having this for our students. Both hearing it here, I think, is very important, and also just being genuinely present for our students is extremely important. And I appreciate and applaud all, all of you, and you, the team that are helping. Question, how are the students identified for these programs? Are we ensuring that the entire student body is aware that it's available to help be proactive? Who, kids who aren't, students who aren't quite, need yet, but they're, they know they're going to be?
Well, so that was actually one of our major accomplishments last year for ALP. The process before for getting students into ALP was a little bit kind of sitting around a table and, and adults talking about who and how many spaces, and it really ended up being like, I got five, I've got three. So we have decision rules now for ALP. It is open to all students, but the, right now, those decision rules, which are being, you know, they're, they always have to be tweaked and adjusted based on your population and your capacity. But right now, we're, we're looking at, sorry, I completely just lost my train of thought. This is testing brain taking over officially. Thank you, we are using.
I can actually, I can follow up with that as well.
Right, decision rules, that's what I was talking about.
So those decisions will help define, so it's never going to be like, well, I've got this student and you've been asking 10 times.
Right.
So we have systems.
Yeah.
That we have in place, and each of the teams, the behavioral target team and the academic target team would come together and have those discussions. So similar to our other levels, they'll be having discussions on students based on need. We use the STAR assessment as one of the criteria, but there are many other criterias that we use.
It's important to remember too, that when we ever identify that we were, you know, students in some sort of trouble, and really, you start with obviously the lesser intervention, right? These are bigger interventions, so we start with the lesser. The team needs again to kind of progress monitor and then determine, do we need a different intervention? Do we need more time with this? What supports do we need? So it's really a progressive process.
So when you consider the three tiers, that first tier being our core instruction, and then the second tier are interventions that we're doing, similar to the ones that we reviewed. And then this specific intervention, this is a tier three intervention. These are students that are at risk of not graduating or dropping out, or they're currently at risk of going to truancy court. So they're the students that we're trying to bring back and have similar success stories to the ones that you've heard.
Thank you for railing my train of thought back on track. But yes.
Great. So one quick question, the, I'm sure you do this, but for the math ramp up, that's publicized for LC students as well, that would be incoming for first year.
Yep, good.
And then what I really like about this is it seems to me you're breaking down silos, right?
Yes.
So, you know, and, and really trying to, to, to kind of get the synergy going from what each program offers. So that's kind of nice to see too, really, that you're, you're doing that, so. Alright, thank you very much, we appreciate the updates.
Thank you.
Moving on to some of the business portion of the meeting, can I have the approval of school committee minutes, please?
Move, can I move for the approval of the school committee meeting minutes of March 28th? And the executive session meeting minutes, March 28th.
Second.
Which I called for last week too, but.
We'll just do it this week. All in favor? Any opposed, unanimous, seven zero. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous, seven zero. Moving on to business A, can I have a motion, please, for a discussion and action on the contract of the PHS principal effective July 1, 2023?
I move for discussion and action on the contract of the Portsmouth High School principal effective July 1, 2023.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Vares.
Excellent, thank you. I'm happy to announce this evening that Dr. Kenworthy's selection for the next principal of Portsmouth High School is Dr. Jeffrey Heath. Dr. Heath is the current principal of Middletown High School, the former assistant principal of East Greenwich High School. He was the dean of students and an educator in Tiburon, along with being an instructor at the college level. Dr. Heath is highly regarded throughout the state as one of the top high school principals. He's looking forward to starting on July 1st and having the ability to make a positive impact on PHS and the community that he and his family call home. I'd also like to thank the close to 30 individuals, students, staff and parents who participated in the selection process. A huge thank you to Mrs. Kim Aguirre, our director of human resources, and Mrs. Charity Shay, our director of student services, who helped me chair these three committees. So tonight, you're being asked to approve a three-year contract for Dr. Heath. This contract was unanimously approved by the personnel subcommittee.
And forwarded to the full committee. Questions, comments? Alright.
Just to comment, I just wanted to say thank you for having the interview process that you did. I feel like it was very inclusive, it was great to have the students involved across the board. I feel it went very well.
Excellent, thank you.
So I move for the approval of the new contract for the Portsmouth High School principal, Jim Peet. Congratulations.
You're moving for it.
Jeffrey, Jeffrey.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, alright.
We're changing your birth certificate while we're at it, sir.
It's the other guy.
I'm so excited, I'm so excited.
Okay, we have a motion for approval on the floor, do I have a second? All in favor? Unanimous, seven zero, congratulations. We'd welcome you to say a few remarks if you, if you would do so.
Thank you everyone so much, I'm so humbled and excited to be here this evening and be part of, you know, already. Thank you, everyone, so much. I'm so humbled and excited to be here this evening and be part of, you know, already a great meeting. I really feel like it's going to be a great fit just with the jovial nature and everything that's happened tonight already. So thank you for that. I also wanted to thank before I started my my conversation, Dr. Viveras, Ms. Aguilar, Ms. Shea. Chairperson Copeland, Dr. Kenworthy, out in TV land, right? And then as I recognize, just people that are on interview committees, you know, committee member blank. Thank you for being there as well. It was really a difficult decision for me, honestly, and one of the things when I applied for the position. Was to see if Portsmouth High School was a fit for me. Being a member of the East Bay educational community through Tiburon, Middletown, Portsmouth, and then living here for over ten years in the community. Portsmouth's reputation precedes itself as really a forward facing, you know, district that has high rigor. A reputation for excellence and it's something that I followed from a distance for a long time. And to be closer to the community and have those conversations and really get to the nitty gritty of what what drives this public school district is something that. Really made the decision solid for me personally, that this was a great fit. And makes me really excited for the good things to come for us and the district and the partnerships that come along the way. So one last thing that I just did want to share too, and I didn't have prepared. Congratulations to the high school faculty already for what they have going on. I don't know that young man that was in the AOP program that was difficult to hear, but it gives you the willies when you see. You know, a student that wasn't going to graduate and how happy he was on a Zoom video. You know, you can just feel that emanating from from the video and I really look forward to exponentially increasing those opportunities for Portsmouth High School students. And really making those connections and doing that great work and continuing that work. So congratulations to the people that are already there. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm humbled and honored and I'm really looking forward to getting to work. So thank you.
Thank you and welcome to the district. Can I have a motion for discussion and action on business B, please?
I move for discussion and action on the twenty twenty three, twenty four school committee meeting schedule.
Second.
Dr. Viveras.
So this is a proposed schedule for the twenty twenty three, twenty four school committee meetings. It's similar to this year. This schedule reflects meetings held at seven o'clock on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month.
No real changes except for making the date fix. I mean, no additions or no subtractions of meetings.
We won't have any Wednesday or abnormal scheduled.
February thirteenth is a Tuesday.
So I I I just have to question it because I think it's the first time in years that we're having every single meeting in the schedule.
Well, it it's scheduled. You know, we end up changing at least. No meetings in July? We good?
Clarify it. So do like Thanksgiving, Christmas is only like one meeting that month, but why in January? We have one meeting.
Because we have our joint meeting with the town. It's the kickoff to the budget season. So that usually takes place the week of our regular meeting. And then that's the same thing with our April meeting as well. It's a joint with the town. That's also the meeting in January where we have the state legislators there. That's usually like the state legislative kickoff for information session. And as you see with our workshop yesterday, we don't schedule those because those can be called that. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? Any opposed unanimous seven zero? So. We're going to have a series of motions here that are actually rejecting some of these things. We'll make the motion and then Mr. Dero can explain. So Mr. Farver, can I have a motion to reject, discuss and reject PHS bathroom?
Second.
Mr. Dero.
So at our last meeting, school committee approved the award of the contract for the high school bathroom renovations. At that meeting, there was some discussion about including electric hand dryers. We had rejected that and my recommendation had been to use a paper dispensers. So we decided to take that back after that discussion of the school committee to the building committee to get further input. And after those discussions and feedback from the actual high school administration and the custodians. Our recommendation is to still stay with the paper towels and not do the hand dryers. And the building committee voted six one to do in favor of that.
Yeah, so they, that was the the strong preference of of the custodians in the high school. So we basically already approved this, but it was just do doing extra due diligence to make sure that that's what the building wanted.
Yes, and if that had come to a different decision, we would have done a change order with the with the contractor, but nothing needs to be done.
Right, and it saves us forty two hundred dollars.
Because we already have the towels.
Well, because the towels are covered.
Chugged by the contract. Is that the principal reason for going that way or was?
No, there were there were a lot of different reasons.
As I mentioned, the sanitary issue.
That absolutely came up. That was something that was discussed. There were a number of reasons, but it just, on the whole, the who felt that that was the right way to go.
Because I'm just thinking from the custodians point of view, I'm surprised, I'm kind of surprised they recommend that because I'm thinking these towels get thrown all over the place, I imagine.
They had stated related to that, that there's splatter on the wall. From the hand dryers, from the custodians.
Yep, the wall and floor.
Okay, so vote of a vote yes here is to reject the add-on for PHS restroom hand dryer. So all in favor of rejecting the PHS restroom hand dryers, raise your hand. Any opposed unanimous seven zero. It's the same thing here with the Melville hand dryers. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
To reject the Melville restroom hand dryers. Same same argument.
Same thing spoke to custodians, administration. They were in favor at six one at the building committee.
Okay, can I have a, can I, all in favor of rejecting the add-on of restroom hand dryers? Any opposed unanimous seven zero? Okay, can I have a motion for discussion and action not to proceed with the Hathaway restrooms in the summer of twenty twenty?
So I move to table.
No, not to proceed.
Okay, not to proceed. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dero.
So went out to bid while back, received two bids, both of which were. Really unbelievably high, over eight hundred dollars per square foot to renovate. Second bid was over a thousand dollars per square foot to renovate. Way over budget by the lowest bid was over budget by almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Lot of reasons why these bids probably came in as high as they did. Our recommendation is to reject these bids. Go out perhaps next summer again or in the in the winter for the summer project and rebid them and hopefully get better pricing.
And and part of the reason given was it's there's so much work out there right now that people are like, well, unless unless you're willing to pay an exorbitant amount. We're just not going to really put in a serious bid. So we're like, okay, we'll we'll wait. It doesn't mean that they're not going to get done. It's just. Yeah. All those in favor of not proceeding with the Hathaway restrooms in the summer of twenty twenty four, raise your hand. Any oppose, any people who want to proceed? All right, seven zero approved, not proceed. Number eight.
I move, move to table.
Right.
The bid award for the Portsmouth High School Memorial Drive project.
Right, and we don't have to vote on that because any, or is that just a consent agenda, Attorney Kara? We're voting, so we do have to vote on this, right? Can, okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? The table.
Second.
Uh huh. Okay, so Dr., I'm sorry, not Dr., Mr. Dero.
After is fine. All right, I'll take that.
So we we opened the bids for the Memorial Drive project a few weeks ago. There were there were three bids. There was some confusion amongst the bidders, perhaps some some specifications were unclear. We brought it to the building committee today. We're hoping to work through that and have a recommendation, but but the the feeling of the building committee was. We should go back, refine some of our specifications and rebid this project to get better pricing and more clarity around requirements.
When do we foresee we putting this back out to bid? Because I'm now now just. And I'm sure the building committee said it, we're moving one project for the next year and now possibly moving another one. I I I don't want to completely backload next summer, not the summer coming up with projects.
Yeah, no, good question. Our our hope was we would have, there needs to be a meeting between the town, DPW. Director, our civil engineer, our architect, our facilities director and our OPM. They're hoping to schedule that for next week. Our goal, if everything works, and I cannot guarantee that, is that we will have it rebid. Probably within the next month, we'll hopefully have results and and hopefully, depending on procurement and lead times. Still be able to do the project over the summer into the school year most likely going.
Since I also sit on the Portsmouth Water and Fire District, we've already begun buying the piping for the for the project. So hopefully it's not, I mean, I don't know what that does to us except we've expended the money. So, you know, if it gets delayed next year, for example.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think I've been on those calls with with those folks and they they sort of caught wind of what we were doing. So it wasn't planned to be done, but they decided that, hey, it worked out great. It would be great timing to do both your project and our project at the same time. We hope to continue to do that. If not, I my guess is they'd be just as happy to do it next summer if that's the worst case.
Well, they can accommodate each one. I'm just saying because they thought it was going to be this summer for sure, we've already. And the reason is that piping is so hard to procure.
We thought it would be the summer, right, for sure as well. It just didn't work out. It may, it still may be, we're hoping, but we're moving as quickly as we can.
And the building committee signaled its readiness to have, and normally our next meeting would be May seventeenth. But they signaled a willingness to meet early if that would help move the the this project along soon too. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table. Where am I here? Item F, the PHS Memorial Drive project, it's been seconded, all in favor of tabling. Any opposed unanimous seven zero? Okay, can I have a motion for discussion and action for item G, please?
I move for discussion and action on the Melville HVAC project submission to the RIDE School Building Authority for the construction documentation review.
You motion to approve?
Discussion action.
Discussion action.
Or to move it? Okay, yeah. Let's let Mr. Dero introduce it first here. Go ahead.
Yep, so this this is a project scheduled right now for not this coming summer, but next summer. There is a very long lead time on some of this equipment. So we want to get these RFPs and bids out on the street as quickly as possible. So this should look familiar familiar to you. You've been approving the three submissions to ride for all of our projects. Construction document documentation is the final review before bidding. So that's we're asking for your approval to submit that.
And when would you, if if we approve this, when would this go out to bid?
Our hope is to put this out to bid sometime this summer, probably like around July, August.
For next year.
For next summer, giving people eleven to twelve months to procure the required equipment.
Comment.
Larry Fitzmaurice, fifty Kristen Court, have a quick question about the bond. In the review of the current budget that's come out of the town administrator's office. This bond is listed as nineteen point five million.
Yes.
It was approved twenty one point four million.
Yep.
Why is there a difference?
The difference is made up by the Pago money that the state will give you in lieu of housing aid. So by state law, the amount that can be borrowed is total. Has to be reduced by the amount of. Pago money that will receive in lieu of housing aid. That's a calculation that Ride tells us, so we take the total project costs, subtract that and the difference is the bond.
Pago is the interest support?
Interest support is the housing aid. So any bonds that get issued through Rybeck are qualified for both principal and interest housing aid. Pago is rather than getting housing aid over the course of, say, twenty years as the bond payments happen. As I'm making payments today, I submit them to Ride and they reimburse the town immediately. So we've already been reimbursed probably about eight hundred thousand dollars in immediate money to help finance the project.
And in the documents that I reviewed, it was stated that we believed we would get forty percent. On the cost of this bond.
Yes.
Was that successful?
We won't know for sure. Ride will not tell us until we submit a completed project, which we hope to do at the end of the third year. So at the end of FY twenty, probably the summer of twenty five. We'll know, but we have every expectation that we will get the forty percent. Thirty-five is guaranteed, forty is the extra five percent for safety.
Is, okay, thirty-five guaranteed. So. This extra five percent, we're not going to find out until three years from now whether we're going to get it, is that it?
Yes, we have to submit to them a completed project, fill out certifications, and then they will tell us whether or not they believe we qualify. Obviously, we've had many conversations with them as part of our stage two process over the last two years. We're highly confident we will qualify.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So these is construction documentation moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed unanimous seven zero? We are rejecting H, right? Or is that approving?
Nope.
No, okay, can I have a motion for discussion and action for H, please?
I move for discussion and action on the Hathaway HVAC project submission to the RIDE School Building Authority for the construction documentation review.
Second.
Yep, exactly the same as Melville. It's an HVAC air conditioning project. Again, we want to get this submitted final review with Ride so we can go out to bid and get that project lead time started.
Yeah. Seeing no further questions, all in favor? Any opposed unanimous seven zero? Ms. McDate, moving on to can I have a motion for business I, please?
Sure, I move for discussion of policy DL, which is the Fair Labor Standards Act Safe Harbor policy. This is our second read.
Second.
Okay.
So this was a policy that was read and approved in the policy subcommittee. Ms. Wire, do you want to speak to it since it originated with the labor relations?
Sure, I can speak to that. So this policy, this has come up at least three times recently in some of my. Professional organization meetings.
Are you on mic?
I am, Mike. Can you hear me now? Okay, so basically what this is, is it it provides protection against to the to the school department. Against the possibility of losing exempt status under the Fair Labor Standards Act for improper deductions. Now that means if if an deduction was made from a paycheck and if it was erroneous or accidental. You could lose your your exempt status for your if your exempt employees. There is a provision in the act that says all you have to do is have a policy. And that policy just needs to have two elements and it needs to say that you intend to comply. And also that you need to establish your complaint procedure. So that's what this does. In addition to that, it does outline what the exempt status and non-exempt status employees are. It defines them. And it also provides notice to non-exempt employees who are hourly employees. About unauthorized work and falsification of time sheets. So this does give us recourse to discipline, you know, the policy violation if there were such a thing to happen. And it puts them on notice that they're, you know, that what their obligations are.
In putting in this policy, would it impact any current employees? Second question, I'm just going to give you all of them. Second question would be, would if there are any employees to be impacted by this policy. Would there, would there be any action taken against them post-episodio back?
You mean if the policy was not in place?
If the policy is put in place, does it impact any current employees?
There's no, this isn't the result of any current issue.
Okay.
It's strictly that it's been coming up a lot in all of my professional organization meetings. Specifically the exempt status piece because of a recent Supreme Court decision. That was really damaging to the employer. So that's why it started coming up.
So my second question is irrelevant.
Okay.
More insurance proactive.
It is absolutely proactive and it protects, provides protection.
Okay, so we are just discussing this time. It'll come on next meeting for the third read. Great, thank you very much. We have no reports to receive tonight. Before we adjourn, I would just like to note that April 25th is our town budget presentation here in town hall. So school committee members usually attend if they're able to and Dr. Kenworthy and Mr. Duro present our budget to the town council. And then our next regular school committee meeting is May 9th. Can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Unanimous seven zero. Thank you very much for attending. Congratulations. Do you have anything for me to sign?